Resolution by the Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio to commend Jeffrey Erb for his 20 years of service and dedication to the citizens of New Philadelphia as the city's information systems specialist. Whereas Jeffrey Erb has retired from the position of information systems specialist for the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. And whereas Jeffrey Erb had shown his loyalty, dedication, and commitment to our citizens by his 20 years of service and dedication to the city of New Philadelphia. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio as follows. The City Council of New Philadelphia, Ohio does hereby recognize, commend, and thank Jeffrey Erb upon his retirement for the position of information systems specialist for his 20 years of service and dedication to the citizens of New Philadelphia, Ohio, dated 27th December, 2021. So Jeff, if you could come up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You got any, you got any words you want to say?
Well, I'll tell you what, it's been, it's been a pleasure. It's been 20 years of pleasure working for everybody in the city. I've never, I haven't met everybody in the city, but everybody that I've met and worked with has always done an exemplary job of working for the citizens of New Philadelphia. And the crew that is replacing us is going to do a good job also. So thank you very much for this honor.
Before you sit down, let's get your family, let me get a picture too in here. Whoever's here with Jeff, you can see him.
My wife Marcia and my daughter Abigail.
Oh, sure. Where you want me? Where's my camera? Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll open up the comments. Any comments from the City Council? Mr. Erb, I know you've had some, and you have others. Yes, Mr. Erb?
I'd just like to thank Jeff. There were times that I thought that he had moved his office to the police station. It seemed like every time I went in there, Jeff was in tackling some kind of an issue. And just want you to know that, you know, appreciate all the hard work that you put in to try to untangle the mess that was always even being the issue over there.
Too much idle time. Thank you.
We'll miss that.
Thank you.
All right, I'm glad to clarify that. Boy, was that a tricky part. All right, well, nobody else comment, we'll move on to Resolution 41, 2021. A resolution by the Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio to commend Rick Marchaletti for his seven years of service and dedication to the citizens of New Philadelphia as the city's Assistant General Services Superintendent. Whereas Rick Marchaletti has retired from the position of Assistant General Services Superintendent for the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. And whereas Rick Marchaletti has shown his loyalty, dedication, and commitment to our citizens by his seven years of service and dedication to the city of New Philadelphia. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio as follows. The Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio does hereby recognize, commend, and thank Rick Marchaletti upon his retirement from the position of Assistant General Services Superintendent for his seven years of service and dedication to the citizens of New Philadelphia, Ohio, dated this 27th of December, 2021. Right here. All right, we'll move on to Resolution 42, 2021. A resolution by the Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio to commend John Zookel for his 12 years of service and dedication to the citizens of the New, citizen of New Philadelphia as the city Ward Two Councilman. Whereas John Zookel has retired from the position of Ward Two Councilman for the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. And whereas John Zookel had shown his loyalty, dedication, and commitment to our citizens for his 12 years of service and dedication to the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio as follows. The Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio does hereby recognize, commend, and thank John Zookel upon his retirement from the position of Ward Two Councilman for his 12 years of service and dedication to the citizens of New Philadelphia, Ohio, dated this 27th of December, 2021. So John?
I have my daughter Caitlin, my oldest with me, all the way from Texas for tonight. My son Ethan and his wife Bailey. I'm proud to announce that they're going to be new parents come this summer, and I'm going to be a grandpa. My daughter Mab and here with me this evening as well. And of course, my better half, my wife, so thank you.
Do you want to turn around?
We'll switch spots.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, you, you do, I have a few words to say. I want to tell you, I purchased extra data on my phone just for tonight to pack up all the things I have to say. But I would like to truly begin by thanking my family for their support during these 12 years. They gave a lot of time whenever I sat down and figured out the number of days I missed with meetings and whatnot over my 12 years. I had better than three years' worth of days when I had commitments of meetings that meant time away from home and time away from my family. So I'm very thankful to them for allowing me the opportunity to serve the citizens of New Philadelphia. I'd like to thank the citizens of New Philadelphia, in particular those of Ward Two, for electing me to the three terms of office that I was fortunate enough to run for. I was very pleased always to do that. I made a great deal of friendships along the way with all of you here this evening as far as administration and council. Some of my best friends are on this council and I will miss them. I have to say, I met a friend, an unexpected friend and colleague along the way. He's from a different party than I am, but the friendship I developed with Mr. Holland, someone who I had not met before serving on the council, I will always treasure and be, we'll stay in touch. So again, very, very thankful for all that. We accomplished a great deal. I'm so very pleased that we were able, through my committee and the efforts of the Sauer Committee, believe it or not, to get a new fire station for the city of New Philadelphia. And the work we've done at the airport, the work we've been able to achieve during the pandemic with the health department, I could go on and on. Most importantly, my greatest source of satisfaction was the ability to help the citizens of New Philadelphia whenever they called, whenever they asked. I always tried to go to bat for them because that's why I was elected. People would tell me I'm a politician, I would say, please don't use that dirty word around me. I am a public servant. I am not a politician. I am here to serve the public and that's what I was sworn to do when I put my hand on that Bible. And that leads me to the unsolicited advice I have for Mr. Pace and Mr. Sullenright as they take those oath of office and they fill the seats for myself and for Mr. Maurer. By the moment you take that oath of office, gentlemen, you are no longer a Democrat or Republican. You're a servant to the citizens of New Philadelphia. There is no political platform that we operate under this city. Yes, you may be that in name, but when someone calls you up, you don't make a decision as to whether they have a D or an R next to their name. When someone called up and said, hey, I have a tree that's fallen and it's across the back of my yard, I didn't say, well, wait a minute, are you a Democrat or Republican before we made a decision to help them. We are here for the good of the city and I hope they continue that legacy of always recognizing public service before politics. Thank you very much, I truly appreciate all of you.
Comments, Mr. Rickley, that you can get your end of?
Yeah, I'd like to thank John for his service to the city. As he said, a city servant. And that's exactly what I believe that our positions are. We are a service to the citizens, no matter what position we are as an employee of the city. And I think that's the most important. I think John is a true emblem of that for our citizens. And that's the most important thing. He is a friend of mine, as is Mr. Maurer, but I'll get to him later. John was very helpful to me when I got started on council, coming from the administration side and being a water superintendent coming to this side. Yeah, there's all kinds of things you want to do, but always what came first and what I saw John do was how do we help people? And I think that's what I want to thank him for, for me helping me to help people. And that's what you commend him for, John. Thank you very much for your friendship, your leadership, and we're going to be, you're going to be very well missed on this council. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. I just want to say, you know what, I don't intend on going away. I've been approached about, you know, continuing public service in different ways. You know that, my friend. And whether that be on the school board for the city of New Philadelphia or some other endeavor, who knows what that'll lead to, but thank you very much. You're right, public service above all. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Lanzar?
I just wanted to kind of echo, tell me, Rickley, with all of the experience and leadership that he's been able to show me over the last eight years on council. You know, we may not have achieved eye to eye on every issue, but I know that we both know that each other has the best intentions and what's best for the city. And I respect you for that. Thank you.
Mr. Erb, Maurer. Or Mr., yes, Mr. Maurer, yeah.
Mr. Zookel, I, I can't say enough about you. You've been a pillar of this council and I bring down you in my meeting. It's been a great ride. I miss you, buddy. You should stay in touch. And I, as you said, it's not about a beer and honor here on council. It's about moving this stuff to the city. Nothing made about the other council groups I sat on top throughout the years, but this group can agree to disagree and everybody, I think, has intentions of our city. Best of heart and it's going to be tough come January, I'm on my day and see each other. It really is. I got to visit my friends.
We do, we do have open seats back there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just saying.
As a guest, you'd be great. I appreciate bouncing off you and thank you, thank you.
Mrs. Venkman?
Just want to thank you on all of your insights and your experience has always been helpful. So thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Pappan?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Zookel for his support in the area of the safety forces, which in turn results in the services that the safety, safety forces provide to the citizens of New Philadelphia. Without your support, we may not have been where we're at now on Penn Street. So I appreciate all your work and effort.
All right, Mr. Fate?
I think the world of John Zookel. When I ran for Law Director 10 years ago, Mr. Zookel supported me. And that wasn't popular within the department, wasn't popular within the council, and it wasn't even genuinely popular among the populace because I already have this 25-year commitment to do law for the city and have served for a long time in the city. I never forgot that. And out of that experience and being elected, we have a tremendous bond and a friend, a friendship that I am very grateful to have shared with Mr. Zookel. He's been an outstanding public servant. I'm a little bit angry at him because he's no longer going to be my councilman and he's not going to be my kid's principal. So I let him know that I'm not happy with that, but I am eternally grateful for what he has done for our city. He's been both a friend and a mentor to me. And I look forward to whatever endeavor he chooses in the future. And while he's not going to be my councilman anymore, he's not going to be my kid's principal, he's trading that all in for even the best title we could possibly get, which is going to be a real one. So that's what's important. And as my friend, I just want to say thank you for the friendship. And when some of the ladies retired when I was on here, I gave them roses. I did, I gave Sam the Mickey Mouse watch and joke that's because I couldn't afford a gold watch. That was all in fun because it was Sam. And I'd just like to come over and shake, shake your hand.
All right, any other comments? I know, John, we've, again, we've known each other, I've had the privilege of being on council for two years, but I can remember when we hired you into the New Philadelphia school system when I was on the school board. So we've known each other all those times and we've been able to have some good times working together for the schools and also for the city. So again, thank you for your service. And like I said, we do have open seats come January, you guys can sit here and back. Tell us how things are going. Any other comments? All right, now we'll move on. Resolution 43, 2021. A resolution by the Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio to commend Rob Maurer for his 20 years of service and dedication to the citizens of New Philadelphia as the city's Ward Four Councilman. Whereas Rob Maurer has retired from the position of Ward Four Councilman for the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. And whereas Rob Maurer has shown his loyalty, dedication, and commitment to our citizens for his 20 years of service and dedication to the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio as follows. The Council of the City of New Philadelphia, Ohio does hereby recognize, commend, and thank Rob Maurer upon his retirement from the, from the position of Ward Four Councilman for his 20 years of service and dedication to the citizens of New Philadelphia, Ohio, dated this 27th of December, 2021. So Rob, come on up. Can I get a little picture of you?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
You got comments? You had your speech?
Um, I was having trouble with Mr. Zookel. Your guys that know me, that's hard to do. No, I did calculations and 20 years times 26 meetings a year, like 520 meetings. You don't do a meeting in an hour. And that's on top of committee meetings and all the other stuff behind the scenes. So spent a lot of time here. I'll miss it, I'm not going to lie. It's been a great ride. The city, you know, I was always taught to do things better than when you got there. And I hope the city's better. I appreciate everybody who has voted for me and supported me in the past. It's going to be, it's going to be difficult to look back. I mean, my son, he's a freshman in college, my daughter's almost a senior. And my daughter's only 16 months old whenever I first joined. And Law Director Fate, he's the one that encouraged me. I remember watching this episode of The Sopranos and calls me up like 9:30 at night, hey, you want to run for council? I know, I didn't say to you, I'm 31 years old. And maybe. And then he gave us some campaign advice, like, you know, put your daughter in some pom poms, you know, she's a year and a half old, put her in a quicker program, everybody will vote for you. So, so we did that. Guess I won, I don't know if it worked or not, but I can't say that stuff now, but it's been a great ride and I really appreciate everybody and I'll miss Monday night, so. That's right. Thank you.
All right, comments, Mr. Rickley?
Yes, Mr. Maurer. If you want, you can help me with, you know, you're a man of few words when you're in your committees and when you're dealing with city issues. But when you do speak, you speak loud and clear and that's what I appreciated about you. You didn't have very many non-tough issues, I would put them. Your issues had dealt with two sides, two sides were very vocal on a lot of issues you had to deal with. Watching you with that, you handled them very well. You scolded people when you needed to. You patted people on the back when you needed to. And that's a sign of a good leader. And that's what I want to say. Thank you for your leadership in the city. You are also my friend and we talk about different things other than politics, we do talk. So I thank you. You're going to be missed very much, as John both, both will be. But like I said, you're a man of very few words, but you did handle a lot of situations with me, the city a better place, and that's what I want to commend you on. You both left the city in better than you found it. And that is what a true leader will do. And then you are smart enough to let someone else take over. And that's another sign of a good leader. You don't stay too long because you stayed too long. That's a long way down. So I want to thank you both. I want to miss you. I want to call you. I already have a date with you in January, so we can keep the finances and everything in the city going forward. So I want to thank you both. Thank you, Rob. And I wish you both the best. As John said, if there's still some seats, and if there's not, I'll find one for you. Thank you.
Mr. Lanzar?
I've really enjoyed the eight years I got to serve with Rob. I mean, he's been a new friend, you know, not, not just council-related items, I mean, things we discussed every year, but we've had some, some doozies in here, some pretty huge questions in the years. And Rob has always been the one to keep it even keel. No matter what, he never gets, you never, you never see his emotions come out as far as, you know, in that way, you know, you know, he's letting you get the best of him. And, you know, I appreciate that. And I think he's, he's the biggest bridge builder in this place to find common ground. And that's what you need to do as City Council, is find common ground so that you do what's best for the city, and I appreciate it.
Other comments, Mr. Zookel?
I just want to thank you for your 20 years. And I think that the knowledge that you brought is, you can't compare to anything. And you mentioned, when you said you hoped that the city was better as you're going out than you came in, and I can tell you 100% it's better. Thank you.
Mr. Holland?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't speak to this dating thing. I have heard it.
You have one, I see.
I have heard it said that all good things must come to an end. And I don't necessarily understand that, but here we are. To do 20 years sitting in that chair is tough. You've been a stabilizing influence, definitely a leader. Proud to call you, Mr. Zookel.
Mr. Zookel? Thank you, Mr. President. Rob, I'd like to say thank you very much for working those 12 years alongside you, sharing a lot of responsibility in the finance committee and different committees that we were sharing together. As Kelly put it, those are always challenging assignments. And you handled yourself in such class through those. I can think of the most recent one, it was probably one of the most challenging that I can remember in my 12 years on city council, probably the most, for a lot of different reasons. And the diligence you showed, not just in that matter, but that comes to mind the most. The professionalism you showed and your willingness to go above and beyond to look at issues through the lens of others. As Mr. Lanzar said, you're finding that common ground. You were great at that, Rob. You've been a stabilizing force, you had a fabulous job with that finance committee. I was proud to serve alongside you for allowing me the opportunity to be with you, to learn from you, and to share with you. I truly appreciate it. And I know you'll be found in the streets of New Philadelphia even more now. And, you know, the city of New Philadelphia has lost a really good councilman in Rob Maurer. Big shoes to fill for Mr. Sullenright coming in. Rob, I thank you so much and I appreciate you, man. And one thing I do want to end on is what I admired most about Rob, and I kind of owe my apologies to him a little bit about it, that no one would have known if we were of the same political party or not. And that's true with most of us on council, yeah. And I really bow to that because that's been lost, I think, in federal government and state government, people taking sides. And that's how the citizens of New Philadelphia unite. We always seem somehow to work together really well and get through some conflicts. Proud to call you a friend, proud to call you a colleague. Best wishes to you, my friend.
Other comments, Mr. Fate?
I've been with Rob Maurer probably longer than anybody. I, I should correct that, I've been friends with Rob Maurer probably longer than anybody I've known since outside elementary school. We have been friends since the 1980s. He went to Dover, I went to Philly, and there was a mutual friend of hers who grew up with named Jess Swigheimer. And it was commonplace to go to her house, whether you from Dover or Philly, that's just where people hung out, Dover and Philly, both hung out there. And that's where I got to know Rob and become friends with him. I went to Ohio University with him for a brief time, I was his campus senator until I transferred to Golden Wallace College. And I've just been friends with Rob for a really long time. Two things happened 20 years ago. I passed the bar exam and Rob was elected City Councilman. Well, when I was taking the bar exam, I was working five different jobs. You take the bar exam in July. Back then, I don't know how it is today, but back then, I took it in July to get my results until November 3rd. So I was working five different jobs because frankly, I didn't think I passed. So I was trying in all kinds of ways to find time, ways to occupy my time. One of the jobs I had was recruiting Rob Maurer to run for city council and managing his campaign. And I helped orchestrate and add that we put in the program, this little girl that he referenced. I also, some things got a little bit heated in his race and he got a little bit nervous and I handed the press release for that and called me up late at night saying, what have you gotten into? I don't want to come across that way. And he went on to win and like everybody else has said, he's been an even keel here for a long time. The challenges that we have in the past year that I've been working with him on, I can't say enough great things about him. I went to him during that time as much as anything else, sometimes event, sometimes to listen, and a lot of times to learn because he was very even keel, kept things very cool and calm, but very dispassionate timing things that really roughened up, the things that shouldn't have been roughened up. And I'll tell you, I've had, I've had the privilege of working in, I've worked for two United States Congressmen. I have worked in the governor's office at the state level. I've worked at the county level as a public defender. And I've served the city, at the city level for the last 10 years. And I'll tell you, of all the things that I've done in my public life, one of the greatest things I ever did was recruiting Rob Maurer to run for city council. And I want to thank you. You've been a councilman, you've been my friend, and it's been a prior privilege to serve with you. I'd like to shake your hand, too.
Sure. All right, any other comments? Mr. Pappan?
Yes, Mr. Maurer. The safety forces, it is going to miss the support that you have given them over the last 20 years. And I want to thank you for that.
I'd say sometimes over the years, we've been able to give them manpower, but we always try to give them tools.
Yep, it wasn't easy. But no, but we're, but we're making baby steps, so we're not going backwards.
All right, any other comments? If Rob, I guess... If Rob, I guess, like I said, we've known each other a long time as well. We've all had privilege working together for two years, but follow the council meetings I've been doing. You have been professional and upbeat, and you've done a great job. And you will be missed come January of twenty twenty-two. Thank you for your twenty years of service. It's a long time. Any other comments? Now we'll move on to the last one we got here to see. Resolution forty-four, twenty twenty-one. A resolution by the council of the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio, to commend Maureen Winger for her twenty-seven years of service and dedication to the citizens of New Philadelphia, including thirteen years as the secretary to the service director for the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. Whereas Maureen Winger has retired from the position of secretary to the service director for the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. Whereas Maureen Winger has shown her loyalty, dedication, and commitment to our citizens for her twenty-seven years of service and dedication for the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio, as follows. The council of the city of New Philadelphia does hereby recognize, commend, and thank Maureen Winger for her years of service and dedication to the citizens of New Philadelphia, Ohio, of twenty-seven years, including eleven, excuse me, thirteen years as secretary of the service director for the city of New Philadelphia, Ohio. Dated this twenty-seventh day of December, twenty twenty-one. Maureen? Comments you want to make?
I'm not a public speaker. Not my forte.
You didn't buy any extra data on your code?
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. That's all I can say. Thank you.
All right, any comments? All right, move on. Let's see. Next, is that all the legislative structure?